I just want to say that this meeting may be recorded and it may be televised live. Ms. Haynes, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Polino?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Mr. Scamro?
Yes. Everyone please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone please remain standing. As we all know, Mr. Bill Hurley passed away recently, and Mrs. Sharkey will say something.
Yes. I just wanted to say that, you know, I knew Bill for a long time, but even longer than that, he had been a teacher, a math teacher in the Winthrop Public School System for 30 years. He was head of the math department. He also furthered his education by becoming a dean of professional studies at Endicott College. One area that Bill was equally as proud is that he served in the Army and National Guard for over 40 years, and he retired as a brigadier general. Bill, really, the number-one thing in his heart was his family, and he dedicated his life to his family, his friends, his students, his soldiers that worked under him, and most important was the service to others. Sandy and Bill created a healthcare service together in Winthrop, I believe maybe five or six years ago, and so not only were they partners in marriage, but they were also partners in business. And I believe Sandy and Bill were married for, I believe it was like about 48 years, pretty close to that. Anyway, they had four children. There was Chris, there was Jennifer, there was Robert, and there was Jean. And they also had 13 grandchildren that they adored and loved. Most importantly, I think Bill would like to be known that he was an honorable man, and that's how he treated other people, with honor and expected that back, too. So our condolences to his family and all of his close friends.
I just want to say that Bill was my teacher, he became a mentor, and he was my friend for the past 30 years. He'll be sadly missed. Bill went through a great deal of suffering, and he never complained once a day in his life, not once. He went on, he taught, and he continued to teach up until the very end. It's a real tribute to him, what I saw at the Waken funeral, full military honors, was just amazing. They had to shut down points early. A lot of people weren't very happy about it, but it was just a real tribute to see the number of people and to see the military honors that he received. So I just want to say, yeah, rest in peace, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any public comments this evening? Vote to the minutes. The minutes from our last meeting, Monday, September 8th, is your motion to approve the minutes. Motion by President Gill, second by Mrs. Sharkey. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Will vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Next is an update on the iPads.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to give you an update. We will be sending notices out to the students, but I thought tonight would be a good night to kick off what's going to happen. Next Monday and Tuesday night, the iPads will be distributed to all students. How we're going to distribute them is through alphabetical. So it'll be A through L. We will have here in the downstairs cafeteria between 6:00 and 8:00. That way, we felt it was better to do it alphabetical so that parents who had kids in multiple grades could all do it at the same timeframe. The forms, the policy that they will be able to look at will be on the website starting tomorrow, where they'll have an opportunity to download those forms, to go through all of the information that they need. There will also be, so A through L will be on Monday night, and M through Z will be on Tuesday night. For any of those parents who are students that cannot attend those nights, the night that they're designated to, we will have a backup night for them on the open house night that the high school will be having on October 8th, for them to, you know, sign all the paperwork and have their iPad given to them. The iPad will be collected at the year's end, and what will happen is parents will be allowed to, if they wish to, take out insurance. They can, we've had the site that's going to go right on the site, on our website, where they can directly go right through the insurance company to take that. I believe it's $39 per year, and that guarantees them anything that goes with any theft or loss of the iPad. In regards to all of the other things that may happen in accidental or stuff like that, we've covered the iPad on it. There is little areas, but all of that information is in the packet that we will be putting on the website for people to go through and understand on it. That night, what will happen when they come in, we will, they will bring their packet signed. If they don't have a packet, we'll make sure they have a packet. They will sign off, they will give it to one group. That group will then hand them a certificate, which is their, who they are, that represents them. It's like an ID card. They will go over with that ID card. They will then get what they call, what do they call that? Scanned. It'll be scanned, their ID number will be scanned in, and then the iPad that they get will be scanned in at the same time so that it matches them. They will be handed the iPad. At that point, they will then go to the last group, which will have them turn their iPad on and make sure that they're enrolled and that they get a username and a password that gets them into start the process. So we anticipate that we should have it all set and ready to roll. We're excited about it. We're also a little anxious about it, because this is the first time we've unrolled this amount of students, but it will be happening very shortly. The teachers will receive the final, the mini iPad tomorrow that they will get distributed. They've gotten the Air Max, so they should be ready for the distribution when the students get those. And then we will work on how they come back at the end of the year. One of the things we have talked about, though, is that what if a class decided to do some type of AP program over the summer? We'll take a look at those by a trial, by, you know, how that would work, and say that maybe this particular, if they're going to be enrolled in these particular class, then they could keep it. But for the all intents purposes, they do collect, we've checked with other districts, that's how they do it as well. They collect them all at the end of the year, because one thing we want to make sure is that if a student, sometimes students leave us, and we don't want to have that not be there, so that's where we're at.
When is the distribution going to be?
The distribution will be next Monday night for A through L, which is the 29th, September 29th, and next Tuesday night for our students' last names, M through Z, and that is the 30th.
And it will be?
And then it'll be from 6:00 to 8:00. So at 6:00, I would advise people at the cafeteria, I would advise people to come at 6:00. However, obviously, we will be here and we'll stay here as long as we need to that night. If you walk in at 10:00 of 8:00, we're not going to, you know, shut you down, or if you walk in at 8:00 o'clock, we're not going to. So we will do whatever we can to get them out. We anticipate it being about 300 to 325 a night, trying to move them out. But we thought of trying to do it maybe over a course of a few nights, but we really want to get them out, so.
And what grades are this for?
Eight through 12.
And when you say it's in the cafeteria, it's in the cafeteria here at Winthrop High School?
Winthrop High School, correct. So they will enter, though, what we are going to do is have them enter into the auditorium lobby, and enter there to make sure that they have all the paperwork that's collected and they've completed all of that. Then they'll go down to the cap and move in the direction that they need to move into.
Can we have an update at some point in the future, just as to what classes are interactive and how they're being utilized? I mean, it's great to have the technology, so we have iPads. I just want to be able to show the public that it's not a waste of money just to say, hey, look, we have the technology.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that everyone knows that the technology's being utilized in the classroom, and it's interactive, and.
I would hope that it's going to be all classes.
I look forward to reading the policies. You said you can take insurance out for $39 against theft.
Right. Theft or lost.
Theft or lost, okay. I'm assuming, I'd like to see there'd be a police report attached to it.
Yes, there is. That's part of the insurance policy, that you have to, when there, there's a thing in there that says, if, in order for the insurance company, that they're going to credit you that money, you have to show that there's a police report.
Now, what if a student or parent does not take the insurance out, lose it, do they not go without an iPad for the year?
Well, they would be responsible for, they would have to be respons, that's also in the policy of what those costs would be, and they would be responsible on it, you know, for that. And we've also given, we also have an option in there as well, for a student that decides that, or a family that says, my child has an iPad, I don't want to have him take an iPad, and we have a sign-off there that says, okay, they're going to use their own iPad, because they'll still need the Winthrop user ID, because the reason for that is so when we upload school-wide. So those, as far as, those are the risks that we take on that, we'll have to take a look at that. We've looked at insurance costs, and we've looked at some of that stuff, and we could, we could turn around and say, okay, we're going to insure this whole thing for, you know, for all of these students, and the amount that you project that you may lose, that you have to repair, is by no means the amount that we would want to spend just on insurance on alone. So we feel that we, we're going to budget enough that we think that we should take care of what we project would be lost or stolen. So, but if I was a parent, I would take that insurance.
Oh, is that an, last question, is that an Apple Care?
Yes.
Plan, okay.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
You might have said this, but do the parents need to accompany the students?
We do, we do. We would like the parent to accompany, because the parent has to sign off as well, and we want to make sure that the parent is there. We want the parent and the child to understand that this is something that is, you know, big piece of equipment here, so.
And one more. Do we feel like we have the tech support and the Genius Bar and everything set up and ready to go?
We do. That's what we've been working on. Mr. Rilocko, Mr. Sacco, Mr. Riordan, they've been working primarily around the clock on getting the stuff out. We've been, we did our first training with staff on the, on September 9th date, and we will continue on that. I think now we're at the point where we need to get them out there, and we need to start getting people involved in utilizing this.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Perhaps a $39 insurance policy for a school committee member iPad would be good, too. That's a good point. Next are, extra subcommittee reports, and we had a budget subcommittee.
Yes. We met at the superintendent's office on 9/16, 14, at 9:00. It was an open meeting. School building, I'm sorry, school committee members present were William Holden, Don Sullivan, and myself. Others in attendance were Karen Travis, Gary Scamro, John Mosero, and Sue Echols. Our agenda was school budget and swing space, transition money. For, just for information, the swing space money that was appropriated was 1.5 million, and at this point, there has been spent $800,000. We also had a discussion on funding of new positions this year, besides those positions that were replaced due to either resignations or moving on to other school districts. We put a new school business manager, posted it, it's a 40-hour-a-month position, and we're looking at around $25,000 for the position, and we're using the money for the end-of-the-year report money, which is $10,000, and the transition money, which is $15,000. We also are in need and have posted a Spanish teacher. It is, I believe, a one-fifth position. How we have been able to replace that with money is, one of our nurses, we still have a nurse in the high school, middle school, but we, one of our high school nurses left, and we're not replacing her at this time, but she will be replaced when the new school is up. So, and also, we increased money for the elementary nurse to work an extra hour. And we're also putting back the lead nurse. So of all that money, which was probably, the nurse that left was about $61,000. We're using it to increase elementary nurse hours, put the lead nurse back in place, and also this $20,000 for the Spanish one-fifth position. Let's see, discussion of funding of the iPads in the high school has been a big topic, and what we were told is that we use the contingency funds, $148,000. We're looking to see if the SBAC will support some from the swing space funding next year. When we spoke about that, Karen Travis was there, and Karen said that it's really too early to tell at this time whether that will be a possibility. The superintendent did indicate, though, that he would like to establish from that contingency line, funding for our technology for the future throughout the system. Also, there was a discussion about the new curriculum coordinator and where that money will take place. Right now, we did not replace an administrator in the high school. Eventually, we could, this person that we assign or hire could be used for the future of an assistant principal in the new part of the middle school, when the high school, middle school is completed. Originally, that space, that position was not filled, because instead, we replaced an assistant principal, which was Ryan Hurley, instead in the coming school. So that's kind of the process of how things occurred. There was discussion that this is the last year for the Go Math program in the elementary schools, which has, from everything I've heard, has been very, very positively received, and this is the last year for the program, and will need to get funding for next year. There were no votes taken, and there were no documents used, and that's pretty much, I believe, the full report.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey. Mr. Perrin?
Just had a question on the business manager. You're saying it's 40 hours a month. It's about $25,000 a year that you're looking to expend, and that's coming from the transition money from the?
No, I'm sorry. I can correct that. I think we, instead of transitions, it's not coming from transitions, it's coming from the contingency funding.
Contingency, I did say that.
Of teachers that, when we made a changeover. That was why I was going to make that correction on that.
Yeah, yes, I did.
Because I know, because that transition, just so everybody understands, on the transition funding of the swing space, the only folks that approve that is the school building assistance committee. So I don't want people to think that we're spending that.
Their money without their.
Right. So we're not.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
And is it sustainable with that funding, the way we have it set up, for that business manager?
We do, because what we've, the good news on some of the changeovers that we've been able, you know, that have happened this year with some of the ways that it's put in, is that they become a line item, and that's important, is to get that line item in there, that budget. Because once it's a line item, then you can, you know, you can establish and maintain that, and that's our goal.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey. Mr. Superintendent, do you have a report this evening?
I do, I do. Not as long as the last one. I know it was a lot going on, but I wanted to make sure. So first of all, I just wanted to update on everybody in regards to the MCAS. The MCAS will be mailed to the principals starting on the 23rd, which is tomorrow. We, if everything comes into us by tomorrow, our goal will be to send them home either by Friday to the students, or if, worse comes to worse, Monday, they would be sent home with students, and that would give you the reports that they do, it's a parental report on that. In regards to the MCAS, what I will be doing is, I am going to set up, I've put together a schedule that I would like to give the chairman at the agenda meeting, but on the October 6th, I would like to have the high school principal attend to go over the grade 8 through 10 data analysis of the MCAS in ELA, Math and Science. On the October 20th, I'd like to have the Arthur T. Cummings do grades 4 through 7 data with Mr. Harity, and on November 3rd, I'd like to have the William P. Gorman principal, Iden Pearson, review all the data with grade 3. So that way, we can do a building-by-building night. It can be more based on that, so that it's not all coming at us at once on that. The, so that's the, let's see, what else did I have on that? No. So we want to make sure that everybody is aware that those reports will be coming up. There will be some times where I will want to also have delegates and visitors, where we'll bring in the 280s and do some recognition on that as we move along on that. And I will also give a full report on the October 6th meeting, all of the MCAS, you know, in general, and my suggestion would be that we may want to have a curriculum subcommittee.
Curriculum subcommittee.
To go through that stuff, maybe before October 6th, if you wish. The next thing I wanted to do, I don't know if you noticed when you came in, because it might have been getting dark a little, but at last meeting Highland Real Estate came, and you all approved, and they've done a fantastic, beautiful job out in front of the high school.
Yeah, looks wonderful.
With, they brought in a landscaper, and we are watering it daily. We're working to make sure that we do our part on that, but I have to tell you, the pride that they built there was, you know, outstanding, and we're appreciative of it. The, we have, I've requested in an email that I had sent out to the school committee as well as to the town council, to request a dual-budget subcommittee, and I would ask that, at the next meeting, that that be on the agenda so that we could approve, or that you folks could yes or no, approve that, and also have the possibility for discussion on it. The intention of that is so that we could bring the finance subcommittee of the school department and the finance subcommittee of the town council together at this point in the year, and start to take a look at, really educating both sides of how our budgets work, especially doing a Chapter 70 budget presentation, and listening to the town side on various things, and kind of building that communication as we move forward, as opposed to waiting until we get to March or April. Yes?
You, did you say you would like the full school committee to approve the meeting of the subcommittees?
Well, it's, no, I, what I was, I put it out there as, because I went to the open meeting last, so I'm trying to make sure that I've done everything correctly, but in that, I wanted to make sure, I wanted to ask if you'd put it on the agenda to maybe just refer it out for a discussion or whatever at the next meeting, to see if that's what the committee so chooses, unless you think that the budget subcommittee can just go ahead and do that if they want.
I think the budget subcommittee can just go ahead and call a meeting, and if the town council finance committee calls a meeting at the same time, you would need to post it separately, the two separate bodies.
But then, the only thing I was looking at is, there might be things that you want specifically talk to that, to place on that, but that could be discussed as well by the budget subcommittee, so. I wanted to make you aware that I did reach out to see if we could move in that direction. There is a letter in your packet from Charles Sherwin, who is the music teacher at the Arthur T. Cummings School, who was very appreciative of the fact that you had given that transfer that you had done in the past. He has bought his musical stands, he's happy to get his program. He also increased his program up to 130 students now. He had 60 new students that jumped into, for their first year, which means he has 70 second-year students. And at the football game on Saturday, watching the Swamp Scott Band come down the field, I was like, we're almost there, we're getting there. So Charles is very happy on that. School building update, just so that folks know, I know it looks like when you drive by the new building project, you might think, well, jeez, what's going on now? You'll just see a large tube, which is basically drilling 1,800 geopiers. And I asked tonight, really, what that means, and that's the gravel they stick in this tube, and they go down about 16 feet, and that, they keep, you know, pushing it down, and eventually, what that happens is that once all those are done, if you were up in an airplane, you'd be able to see them all, that allows you to now start your foundation. Those should be completed by mid-October, and then you'll also see that, if you drive by, to see that the foundation has grown up, well, not the foundation, the ground level has grown up to 11.2 feet. That's going to grow only higher to 15.2, so it's going to get a little higher as it goes along. And the foundation itself should be completed by December 31st. So everything, as of now, is on schedule. I know as you drive by, you might say, jeez, I keep seeing that same gravel there, but that's, they're working there and moving quite a bit. The other, the, one of the other items that I wanted to just touch base with you is that I believe I may have spoken about this in the past, but as you know, there was a $251,000 earmarked for Winthrop in regards to school safety, and the town, our police chief has been handling that for us, and we have gotten the go-ahead from the town, from the state. It's been earmarked for us, we've submitted our proposals, they have approved those proposals, they're just now sending us back so we can sign off. One of the things that we are going to be putting in is a whole radio system. So what will happen is, all the schools will be, the principals at every school, as well as myself, and the assistant principals, and leadership teams, nurses, there'll be one, there'll be a radio station at each school, will be piped in to each other, so we'll be able to communicate to each other, as well as, all four buses will have radios on the bus, and we'll be able to hear what's going on with the police and fire, which is, one of the requirements of the new law is that we are supposed to have two-way communication now with police and fire. So it's good in that sense. So we're excited about that, that radio system. Soon as we get the go-ahead, we've already, we've done the bids, we're ready to make them do it, and they tell us that they'll be able to get them up and running within two weeks once that is completed. So those are, it's exciting times. Mr. Perrin?
I may be wrong, but did I hear that if, for every two-way form of phone, like a Nextel type of situation, the direct connects, for every one of those we turn in, there's?
There is some type of reimbursement, there's some type of discount that you get.
So maybe we should start letting people know that they have some old technology, their old?
Right, the old Nextels that, you know, used to be able to beep. If you, if you still have those, we could certainly use those, because that would help the plan, so it could reduce that cost.
I don't know what the, the credits for each one, but?
I'm not sure at this time. I do know that the other, the other exciting stuff that is happening is that we are going to be what they call, this is a FOB, for those of you who aren't familiar with what a FOB is, but the high school right now is completely FOB, where all our teachers use the FOBs to come in and out, so the doors are always locked on that particular. Now, at the elementary schools, we have not had the opportunity to do that. We are going to be able to have that done, which is good, too. And so the good, the good stuff now is that we'll be able to really maximize the security of allowing.
And the doors are locked, they're just on the FOB system.
Right, right. So you have, you know, this beeps me in, and every, and.
Directly.
Right, and so what happens is, each teacher is given a certain amount of timeframe, or based upon your position in the school, you know, the access that you are granted. And so that will happen very shortly as well. So there's some, there's some good stuff on that area that's going on.
John, if I can remember right, we also have all updated cameras and?
We do, with the exception of the Arthur T. Cummings School, which we are going to be doing that as well. We will, the high school has all updated, as well as the William P. Gorman School is updated. We're going to update the Cummings School as well, and these are, and the other good thing is, we put some, we want to put night vision cameras back where they need to be. I mean, it's, we're really appreciative of this grant, and we, I have to say, we really appreciate the speaker for making sure that this happens, Speaker DeLeo, so.
And may I also, just to tell the community that our new school that's being built will have everything in it as far as security and protecting the children as they come and go in that building, so we'll have the state-of-the-art of protection for the children, as well as maintaining and keeping up with our other two buildings.
One last thing on the security that should be up, and with the iPads coming and a lot of things that have been going on, my tech folks have not yet installed it, but we have them, which is, when you come into the building, you would, and this is important for parents, there's going to be a couple of times when you enter the building, they're going to be asking you. going to be asking you for your license. And your license gets submitted, and that prints out your ID pass, and then you put that right on. And that's key for us, because that's very helpful as we go along. So I just want parents to be aware that at some point, if they're asking you for your license, it's because that's going to become policy of the building when they come in to allow you to volunteer or work, to get your ID pass.
And if a parent doesn't have a driver's license?
They should have some form of mass, they can get a mass ID license. It should happen.
I'm sure we can have some type of, I know what you're saying, if someone doesn't have a mass ID, but they have a photo ID that's not capable of scanning, maybe, as long as it's an official government ID, there could be a-
Right. If it's an official government ID, we're fine with it.
Do a passport or anything like that.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question about going back to the MCAS?
Yes.
You said they'll go home either Friday or Monday.
Right.
Is it possible that we could have a connected telephone call-
Yes, you will.
-of the evening before they actually are?
And the, the key that I want to do is make sure that all schools send them home the same time. That's important, because if one school sends it and the other doesn't, and in this particular case, all three schools. And so the William P. Gorman School is not used to sending these home, so this is their first time. Although they don't have to send them home this year, I'm sorry.
No, not this year, definitely.
Sorry. No, they never have to send them home, you're right. They just take the test, and the following year they'll be at the fourth grade, so.
Just question, third grade for banks, I've been asked to mention this to you. The entire third grade, they haven't gotten their projectors, and it's becoming, it's affecting their classrooms.
I'm well aware of it, and I-
Okay, so you're aware of it.
-I am well aware of it. I even apologized to the third grade teacher who sent it in, and I've, you know, as I've said, I've pushed the tech directors, and I want that stuff.
They figured they're somewhere. It's not like they're asking for them, they're somewhere in the buildings. They just got out there.
Okay.
Here.
It's Ms. Sullivan.
I just wanted to ask one thing about, if we were on the topic of security, we, we've had our school officer for over a year now, I think, or around a year now, and we don't hear a lot about what she's doing, and maybe that's good news, but is there a way to sort of just kind of get a short update here and there of maybe positive things she's been able to accomplish, or, you know, other kind of safety issues that might have come up?
I can answer a little bit of that. Some of it is, we can't get information because it's specific to students. But in a broad sense, I can tell you that it's a day-to-day issue. Having her in the school, it's been phenomenal, it's been a great officer. Dawn Amstead has been phenomenal. She keeps me up to date every minute of the day as to what's going on. She's been a real help, I believe, to the high school here, and has been drawn to different schools depending on what, on a day-by-day need. You know, if the, if the going-for-bank school has an issue, she'll be the first person to be there to, to assist and to give some advice and assistance to the parent or the, or the faculty. So it's been great. It's kind of tough, I think, to really give you a-
It's working.
Yeah, that's all, and it's working great, and I get great feedback as a supervisor on the police department as to what's happening, because a lot of things we don't hear about because they're averted. You have a police officer there, and it's, it's built a level of trust between students and police. A lot of times, you know, a student will come to a, to the officer, into her office, take a few minutes and just, you know, discuss what their problems are and what's kind of brewing. So it's really, it's been helpful. It's really built a level of trust, and a lot of information's exchanged, and a lot of things are, you know, prevented, a lot of, from escalating, I think.
Go ahead.
I'm just going off what Dawn said, I mean, I'll just come out and say, is there like, I'm just saying that there are, I'm just asking, is there any kind of drug problem, theft problem, bullying problem, or alcohol problem, you know, persistent problem through any of the buildings?
I will say this to you, in the, I mean, not that I'm, not that it's come to my attention at all. I mean, there are, there are your everyday issues, and the principals resolve those issues, and if they come to me, we, we, we deal with those. But in the past, when we had no one here at the high school, there would be constant calls that would, somebody would have to come over to the high school or take care of those issues. And I don't hear those calls at this point, you know, as much anymore. I think that they're, they are averting those issues, and they're working towards making sure.
So we have a safe environment?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Thank you. Personnel issues.
Oh, no personnel issues. What's good is that we have just two folks that we've brought on. We have no resignations and no retirements. Crystal DeMeo is, she started as of last Wednesday, kindergarten resource teacher. And Jeanette Lewis is our school bus monitor. We're very happy to have Jeanette onboard, as well as Crystal. We did, if you'll notice, we did have some positions that were posted, K-room resource, there were the tech building positions, we posted those. We've also, at the William P. Gorman is, they, at last year, they had asked to start a writing program, and they're going to have a, they have some writing program stipends that we posted. We talked about it the last time, we posted the K-12 director, and we've also posted all the high school club advisor positions, that has the annual posting. So those, what you saw on that. And that's it for personnel.
Two items, crossing guards.
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up, because I did, I did post that, I just didn't, we didn't show that on that. We've got three crossing guards that we've posted. We actually lost two post crossing guards this year. So currently right now, the only crossing guard that's working is the one right over here by Nix. So we need to put three additional folks on, and that's why we've, we've also posted that in the newspaper, like we did with the bus monitor. But those positions are going to be as follows. One at Walden, one back over by the gas station down over at Riviere Street?
Riviere and Shirley.
Riviere and Shirley, and the other one we want to put right over here, Pauline and Pleasant. So we have, I've asked folks, if you know of anybody that's interested in doing that, we would certainly appreciate it. And I even went to the crossing guard that is there every day, and I asked her, and she said, I'll get the word out, so.
When you say Walden Street, do you mean by the corner of Walden and Pauline?
No, I mean down, I'm, I'm-
By the basketball court.
-by the basketball court is where I'm looking at it. Because that's been a thorn, and I think it's something that we need to make sure happens.
And the curriculum, Director of Curriculum, I have some concerns.
Yep.
We did this a couple of years ago, and I see you give a detailed report on their duties. And reading through it, it almost seems like this person is almost, is acting as an assistant superintendent, and at one point you have, well, assistant superintendent. And I'm concerned, because we had Connie Moore-
Right.
-she was pulled away from curriculum, she started writing grants, she was pulled away from that, and she used to do the DESE audits, and also she wasn't doing curriculum anymore.
Right.
And this description is so broad, doing staff evaluations, assisting in formal meetings, acting on your behalf, and I'm very concerned that this person is acting as an assistant superintendent, which is our-
Right. It's not, it's not going to be an assistant superintendent, it's going to be a curriculum director, I can tell you that right now. It's not going to be somebody that, if I was, if I wasn't going to be here, that person was going to take over. No, that's Eileen Pearson right now that we have handling that area. This person is going to be in the trenches, working with the principals, and helping with what needs to happen when it comes to evaluations, making sure that the curriculum is written, and working with lead teachers, and working with all of those folks. So that's, that's, that's the game plan of it.
I'm just reading what you-
No, I know, I understand that.
But duties are far and wide.
They, they are, but, but the main goal is for curriculum and curriculum only.
And just because I mentioned the grant writing, have we earmarked anyone that wore that hat?
Well, we do. We have, we do, we, we channel a lot of our grants right now through our Title I Grant Director, which is Kathy Delvento. So if we need some stuff, we channel through school stuff on that, and if we need town stuff, we, we channel it through Joe D'Amolles. But that's who we, we currently go through that right now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nix, I have the warrants. We have a warrant, SVW15-4 in the amount of $56,812.90. Motion by President Gill.
Second?
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion, questions on the warrant? We will vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous? Next is the payroll warrant, dated August 13th, 2014, in the amount of $144,735.50. So a motion to approve the payroll warrant. Motion by Mrs. Sharkey. Second by Mrs. Polino. Discussion or questions on payroll warrant? If not, we will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Abstain, Ms. Haynes? Next item is the use of buildings and grounds. You all have, you've got a list in the packets, the high school drama club, with the gymnastics academy, the high school parent-teacher club, the high school student council, and the Special Olympics. All have requests in. Counsel President Gill has a motion to vote on them all as one. Second. Second by Mr. Perrin. Any questions, comments on any of the requests? All have presented payment in advance. We will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Next is the mandatory background checks. We did have a meeting on that, we have not developed a full policy on that yet.
We were waiting for some feedback from the company, that was not provided.
We're, we, we have talked, the one that was happening at Pleasant Times a couple of weeks ago, that would, that would not qualify for our teachers if they went there. So because it's state, the state area, they want folks to go to those sites currently right now.
They have to be a secured site.
Correct. And then, so, so coming to us is highly unlikely. We thought we could jump on that one, that it happened a couple of weeks ago, and we did some research, Ms. Haynes did, and they-
Come, we have 30 people.
Right. They will come though, if there's more than 30 people, so.
Oh, they will?
They will, if we have more than 30, they will.
To our district?
Right.
And only do our teachers?
Well, we have-
Your own staff.
Well, more than 30.
Right. Well, we have, most of our, most of our new staff has done it.
Right.
So I think once we establish what we want to do, and when, when we have the requirement to get the veteran staff fingerprinted, they have to be fingerprinted within two-year timeframe. So once all of that stuff is set and we're ready to go with that, then we can, we can certainly reach out to them and see if they want to set up the time to come.
Okay, so they will come to the district. All right, awesome. I'll set up another meeting.
Great.
If I could-
Yes?
Because things I'm bringing up just don't fit in. Over the weekend, we had students that attend Winton High School that were in the street canning. If you can look into that.
I can, I can already-
It wasn't approved.
No. Can I, can I speak on that?
Yes.
If I may? So I've said the same thing. I was driving down to go to the football game and saw the students canning, and I immediately called the, first of all, I texted our athletic director, who is out on medical right now. He had not approved anything. Nothing had ever come to this table from our end. It was not a Winthrop Public Schools or a Winthrop sanctioned event. What it was is, our girls who are Winthrop Public School students also participate in an outside fall week, and a parent of those girls decided to get a canning license, which they did. They'd done an approved license through the chief, because I talked to the chief of police afterwards. And they canned for their own fall week, which had nothing to do with the schools. However, I did express to the police chief, as well as to the folks doing it, that they're still our students, and it still looks like it's our, because when I saw the kids coming, they were wearing Viking Pride shirts, and the can says, Winthrop, I mean, it says, Girls' Basketball. So it was really hard to differentiate it, and, but it was not a school function, and that's where we're at on it.
Oh, thank you. I just, you know, it's a liability thing.
Absolutely.
I think that we had our students out there, you know.
It was not approved by me, nor anybody on this committee, nor anyone.
Be out of control.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
On July 29th, 2014, this committee received a request for minutes from executive sessions from February 10th and March 10th, 2014, from an individual. On August 5th, 2014, as chairman of the committee, I responded to that individual, notifying them that they were executive session minutes, and they had not been voted on by this committee to be released as public minutes. But then on our next scheduled meeting, which was August 18th, 2014, they would be discussed and, if appropriate, voted to become public minutes. On August 18th, which was a Monday, this school committee met in executive session to discuss those two sets of minutes, and deeming that the subject matter was completed, voted to release them as public information. On the next day, August 19th, that same individual who had requested them filed a complaint with the Attorney General's Office that, that this school committee had violated the open meeting law by not releasing those minutes to the public. As I said, this committee released them the day before. Nonetheless, a complaint was filed. As chairman of this committee, I submitted a, I submitted that complaint and a response to the Attorney General's Office, Division of Open Government. Next is public comment. Public comment at this time? We will go to public relations. Mrs. Polino?
Nothing.
Ms. Sullivan?
Nope, nothing tonight.
Town Council President Gill? Mr. Holden?
None, we'll sit, thank you.
Mrs. Sharkey?
Yes, I just have, just two things. One, I'd like to acknowledge that our school department received a letter from MIT at the end of August, and if I can, I would like to read it. It was addressed to Mr. Jeff Beck. And it says, Dear Mr. Beck, each academic year, we ask students admitted to MIT to share with us the name of a teacher who has been especially influential in their development. It is a remarkable achievement and a great honor to change a life. So we congratulate you on being named this year by Eric Watkins and Stephanie O'Brien. Most importantly, thank you for your time, patience, expertise, love, discipline, and all the other qualities which have made such an important impact on your students. All of society benefits from the wonderful work you do. Congratulations again on your excellent work. We at MIT are deeply grateful. Sincerely, Mr. Stuart Chameau, Dean of Admissions. And I would also like to thank Mr. Beck and for all that he does for his students, not just his math students, but all of the students at Winton High School. Thank you. And also, I would like to acknowledge who we did not speak of when we were saying all of the positive things that have happened in this building throughout the summer. And we had forgotten to speak about Peter Gobiel, who was so imperative to the completion of the gym and the gym area, the locker rooms, everything that has to, that has been done. Not that Peter physically did it himself, but he supervised to make sure that everything was done correctly, on time, so that our students could have a great area and a resource for their activities. And I just want to acknowledge Peter and to also thank him for all that he did throughout the entire summer. So, that's it.
Thank you. I would just echo those thoughts in public relations, of Mr. Gobiel and the great work he did for us as he did it, and wish him a healthy recovery, because I'd like him back as quickly as possible.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Sharkey, second by Mr. Perrin. Any discussion on adjournment? We will vote. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We adjourn.